If you can join me in the sign of our faith, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord, look lovingly on the people gathered here this evening during this meeting as we discuss and deliberate on the issues of importance to our system and those in our system, especially our students. Help us to be guided by your spirit. May we be wise in our discernment, balanced in our judgment, fair in our decision, and visionary in our planning. Though we may at times have differing views, may we listen to one another and be guided by our common goals. May we always be mindful in our words and actions of what is best for our children and our schools. We ask this through Christ our Lord, amen. In the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen.
Seeing none, a motion to approve the minutes. Or vote to all in favor of the minutes. Anyone opposed? Abstentions? Seeing none, that carries. Action item 3.1, Banking, Investment, and Borrowing. Superintendent Nagoy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Policy I-10 Banking has been renamed to better reflect the content to Banking, Investment, and Borrowing. A brand-new administrative procedure was created to provide the detailed instructions and requirements. Although the requirements are still summarized and reflected in the policy as well as it relates to investment of surplus cash and accumulated surplus, the goals for investment, and signing authorities as well. The format of the policy has been changed to the new template, and the procedure has also been included in your package for discussion. I'd be happy to take any questions trustees may have.
Dr. Rick, thank you. Any... Can I have a mover to get this on the floor? Trustee Quinn, seconded by trustee Trites. Questions, discussion? Okay, so seeing no questions or concerns. This motion is to recommend that the policy I-10 Banking be changed to Banking, Investment, and Borrowing, and along with these amendments be forwarded to the June 20 meeting next week for approval. All right, call a vote, please, all in favor? Anyone opposed? I see no one opposed, so that's unanimous. Can I have a mover for item 3.2, I-34, Reimbursement of Board Business Expenses for Employees? Mover moved by trustee Antamasi, seconded by trustee Rebenda. Superintendent Nagoy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The policy now follows the new template with additional references, principles, and definitions. It also has some changes to requirements, whereas the details on the requirements have been included in the new procedure that was created via I-90, also included in your package for discussion. The main changes to the policy include additions to the principles as well as... As well as changes to the reimbursement of expenses made by purchasing card as it relates to retention of documents and the review of expenses submitted. Mileage rate has been changed to reflect the CRA rate, and the mileage reimbursement procedures have been clarified. And additional clarifications have been made with regards to group booking for conferences and travel. Thank you.
Okay. Questions, discussion? Trustee Quinn?
Thank you, perhaps a discussion item. You know, again, we're moving things from policy into procedure, and once they go to procedure, we don't see them again. I really value the ability to see when senior staff are making changes to policies, and I'm happy to approve them with their recommendation in most cases. But when they proceed to take procedures out of policy or move language from policy to procedures, I don't... I think the trustees and the board members here lose our ability to have comments and represent our constituents in these type of important decisions, such as reimbursement of business expenses.
Anyone else? Trustee Antamasi.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I'm just curious as to if most expenses go through board cards. What would be the nature where there would be expenses without the board cards besides mileage? Because my understanding was several years ago we moved that most or pretty much all expenses should be through the board card. So I'm just wondering what kind of reimbursement would people be looking for if they're traveling? Because generally if it's a board-related event, it would be on a business card.
A couple of expenses might be, for example, if it's a group traveling, and the person that may have the visa for the group may not be there, and someone has to check out, they may have to use their personal card to check out at the hotel. Regardless who actually made the booking, it's the person checking out that has to pay. So there may be instances when you would pay personally, or you may pay with cash. Perhaps you've left your visa in your room or at home, and there's instances when there were small purchases in cash, at which point they would be reimbursed for a check requisition and with an itemized receipt in a very similar manner. But there would be only exceptions.
Anyone else? Director Dawson, would you like to comment on this?
Just to follow up on trustee Quinn. There's not a lot that has moved out of this policy into procedure. There's... I see the toll fees are moved to a different location. There's a couple of sentences that deal with principles vice principles, but mostly it's moved into a different spot. This one isn't one that I would say much is removed and put into procedure.
Have any of the... Has the administrative procedure changed at all? Any other questions, comments, or discussion? Trustee Rebenda.
It's when... Through you, Mr. Chair. The lines where itinerant staff, vice principals, principals, supervisor officers may claim mileage for all travel during the instructional day. So we're just taking policy or pieces of policy out, and then as soon as I vote or the trustees vote yes to this, then we no longer have oversight over it. So that's my concern.
Any other comments, questions, discussion? Trustee Antamasi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you again to Roxanna. Are there any instances where employees would have expenses that say inadvertently got on their card? Maybe they've had to charge something where something's happened, it's on a board card, they have to reimburse the board. Is that taken directly from their pay, or are they expected to write a personal check? I'm just curious as to how that gets followed up on, and if there's a timeframe attached to it.
There's... There would be, again, in exceptional circumstances, some of those instances. And as the monthly visa reconciliation comes due, so you receive your statement, the employee is required to review their expense statement and receipts and identify any item that may have been used for personal reasons. Now, it's discouraged to be used for personal reasons, but for example, if it's only in one bill and a portion of it is for business, it may be an instance where they would say, well, off this particular receipt or invoice, this much is a personal expense, and they are required to provide a check or sign an approval form for payroll deduction.
Trustee Quinn?
Through you, Mr. Chair. That happened to me one time. I was in a dark parking lot and grabbed the wrong credit card out of my wallet, and then realized afterwards that it had been charged to the board. So I wrote a check, I think, or yeah, I think I wrote a check back to the board. So I can see how it can happen. I'm glad that there's a policy in place.
I'm glad we're having this discussion. Yes, it does. Trustee Quinn, did you want to make an amendment or anything like that?
I don't at this time, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, then I'll call a vote on this item, 3.2. All in favor? Any opposed? I see no one opposed, so that carries. Item 3.3, can I have a mover for I-34, Reimbursement of Board Business Expenses for Trustees? Moved by trustee Trites and seconded by trustee Antamasi. Discussion, please, or maybe superintendent Nagoy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Similar with the prior policy on expenses for employees, the reimbursement of board expenses for trustees has been reviewed, and some changes have been made in terms of updating the template to include references, additional principles, and some of the changes have been made throughout the requirements to reflect current practice and controls, as well as some clarification has been made. And all the details are within the policy for trustees, which is a little different from the one for employees, which some of the operating procedures have been pulled out into a separate procedure.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, discussion? Note that there's also expense guidelines as a separate document attached to this. Trustee Quinn?
What is the force or the weight of guidelines when it comes to adjudicating decisions versus policies or procedures?
That's a good question. Director Dawson, would you like to take it? Superintendent, overhaul, or I'll answer it.
The policy is number one, and the guidelines are... Here's a place that you can go, samples of what you can spend your expenses on. It doesn't include everything. We just put some samples that we know in the past that trustees have attended or participated in, and it's a summary.
Trustee Quinn?
But through you, Mr. Chair. Trustees are left to their own best decision to allocate which funds... Sorry, if they're within the policy, then they're within the policy, and the guidelines are just examples. They could still... They're autonomous. They can spend their funds the way they wish to.
As long as it falls policy, you're correct, definitely.
My suggestion is that a good guideline would be, for the removal of doubt, trustees ought to seek board approval for something if they are not sure of whether it's an expensable item. And that's a simple question brought to the board table, a seeking a vote or a resolution on the question. I would say for the removal of doubt, trustees bring the question to the whole board at a public meeting and ask for this. Ask the question to the entire board as a vote. That will resolve, that will remove any doubt.
I think a trustee should still be able to decide on how they would best use the resources allocated to them, even if it is not the same opinion of their fellow trustees. I think their autonomy as elected representatives would stand them instead to make that decision.
Trustee Quinn, I would agree. However, if you want to buy a television set for your home, I would say that that's not permissible. So there are limits. Any other comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, so I'll call a vote on item 3.3. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Seeing no one opposed, that carries unanimously. Can I have a mover for item 3.4? Moved by trustee Michael, seconded by trustee Rebenda. Superintendent overholds.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. The following policy has typically been used for the naming of new school constructions in our system. With school consolidation and closures a possibility, it is being suggested that changes to the policy be made for consideration of name change for schools. Transition committees are established if consolidation does get approved. And with that transition committee, one of the mandates of them, that committee would be to consider the possibility of a name change. Obviously, we want to make sure that transition between two or possibly three schools is one which is a smooth one and inclusive of all individuals into that. So the possibility of a name change could be. So within the policy, there is requirements as to what would be required, and the transition committee would determine whether or not they would recommend to the board of trustees a name change. And if so, the existing process would be followed if trustees would consider that a name change would be put in place. And also, the board committee expansion of student trustees, family and school superintendent, principal of the school, as well as parent reps be included for that committee.
Thank you. Questions, discussion? Trustee Quinn?
In reading and reviewing the policy again, I wanted to get some history on the role of the bishop in being referenced in a policy. I'm not sure that the dioceses or bishops are referenced in many or other of our policies. And I'm wondering why, in this case, we have direct, maybe deferral to the diocese here, and what the history might be for that.
Superintendent?
Through you, Mr. Chair. In terms of history, I can't go back myself far, but I know it's been something that has always been part of it, that it is given to the bishop for ultimately his final approval. I've never heard that the bishop hasn't approved a name that has gone forward from the board of trustees. So it is something that has been in place, and I don't know where the origin has started. Maybe some of our fellow trustees could answer that.
Mr. Chair, from me?
Trustee Row.
As I understand it, we came up with a list of possible names and submitted them to the bishop and asked the bishop to choose. And the present bishop didn't want to do that. So he said, "You tell me what you want, and I will basically give you my blessing." So that's where it is now.
Trustee Antamasi.
I don't know for sure, but my guess would be that the practice probably came due to the fact that we are under the Diocese of Hamilton and that we are a Catholic system. And that being, for every school is, they're in a specific diocese, and that we are Catholic, that would be a good place to start. And it would be a respectful place to start, also because we also ask the bishop to come out and bless our schools. So my guess is that it probably has originated from there somewhere.
Anyone else? I know that in... Just from my memory, I recall one school we named where the pastor, the local pastor, was not consulted or briefed or asked to have any input. So we added the pastor as someone to give some feedback on a local school. So I know that's happened recently, and it was... It's always been a policy, but it was very vague up until 2012, I think. So it was on the books, but it didn't really have much of a procedure. It just had specified a committee and three names and that sort of thing. So it's much more than it was before. Any other comments, questions? Trustee Antamasi?
Me again, sorry. When I'm looking at these, and I've been thinking about this for a while, because we are now in a place where we will be trying to recognize our indigenous peoples. And when I look at this, there's no place really to build... If we wanted to say, okay, you know, we've allowed, you know, communities to pick A, B, C, or pick A, B, C. But I'm thinking of the way we're going, and if we're going to be a board that recognizes our indigenous peoples, that we should have something built in there where maybe one of the names that we put forward should be in recognition of our indigenous peoples. Also being that boards are now recognizing the lands before they start meetings of indigenous peoples. And I'm just wondering if there isn't a way to perhaps work something like that in there.
Superintendent Trite, or trustee?
Picking up what June said, trustee Antamasi. St. Gregory the Great, didn't that come up? We had a conversation around the fact that we would be looking at... So maybe it's just building on that. If we went back and looked at what we agreed we would do about that, that we would get St. Cataria, that's just the one that comes to mind. Yeah, and we... Yeah, and I think we had a conversation about that, and you're bringing it up again. That's something we can... Did you have anything doubt about that, Jane Allen?
Trustee Row.
I can understand what trustee Antamasi is trying to say, but the way the policy is set up, like, that's what's happened. I mean, St. Cateary Decoeth has come up, I don't know, four or five times, as one of the choices. But the parent community, who's the one who whittles it down, doesn't accept it, primarily because we don't have native people in Holton that they can reflect on as part of the community, really. And so, other than if you put that in there, the sentence you're asking for, it still goes back to the parent community, so therefore, we're still in the same boat. Like, I would agree, we should try and get it inserted in every school that comes up until we get it named. And but to put it in policy, I think, is difficult because there's a limited number of native saints as well. So I can understand what you're trying to say, though.
Of course, there is a mechanism for overriding policy if you read operating policy number one. Just pointing it out. Any other? Any other questions, discussion? Seeing none, a call a vote on 3.4. So the policy committee recommends that policy I-15, School Name Selection, with amendments be forwarded to the June 13 board meeting for approval. All in favor? Any opposed? I see no one opposed. Can I have a mover for item 3.5, I-28 Electronic Meetings? Moved by trustee Rebenda, seconded by trustee Trites. Superintendent overhaul, please.
Through you, Mr. Chair. This policy dates back to 2001, hasn't had any amendments since. So it's just very quickly, very minor changes, just rewording, not reorganizing of sections of the policy so that it flows properly and proper clarification of each requirement. So those are just the minor changes in the policy.
Thank you. And I think most of this is directly lifted from the Education Act, the section on electronic meetings, if I'm not mistaken. Any questions, discussion, please? Seeing none, I'll call a vote then. All in favor of moving this to the June 13 board meeting? Or sorry, 20th board meeting, so there's a typo there. All in favor of that? Seeing no... Anyone opposed? I see no one opposed, so that will go to next meeting. Can I have a mover for item three point six, I dash twenty-nine, School Boundary Review Process? Moved by trustee Ian Tomasi, seconded by trustee Rabenda. Superintendent Overhold.
Through you, Mr. Chair. This policy is coming back after it has gone out for stakeholder feedback. Changes were made according to the policy meeting in May from trustees to keep most of the procedure pieces in the policy. So, they were, they did remain in there. And feedback, very minor feedback, was provided by stakeholders, and so it's here for further discussion.
Okay, thank you. And just another correction there to the resolutions should be the June twentieth regular board meeting for approval. Any comments or discussion, questions? Well, you guys want to catch some daylight after this meeting? Okay, so I'll call a vote on item three point six. All in favor? Anyone opposed? See, no one opposed, so that carries unanimously. Can I have a mover for item three point seven, two dash zero eight, Teacher Supervision Duties? Moved by trustee Rose, seconded by, seconder, trustee Michael, thank you. Superintendent Overhold.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Policy two dash zero eight, Teacher Supervision Duties, was originally started in 1987 when a lot of the requirements of supervision was not really in place in other areas. Currently, we certainly have in the Education Act, which has been there for a number of years. But when provincial bargaining began, many of the supervision duties and requirements were negotiated into those agreements, as well as our current local collective agreements has many aspects of teacher supervision within it. So, the policy is somewhat redundant in that we refer to our collective agreements and our provincial discussion tables that created a lot of the local bargaining as well as the Education Act. So, the need for policy, we do not see, so we're recommending it to be rescinded.
Okay, so any discussion, comments, questions about this? Trustee Quinn.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So, this really says that we are out of play completely. If it's the Education Act, if it's collective bargaining, if it's provincial bargaining units, trustees have no role in the teacher's supervision duties, once we take this off the books.
Superintendent Overhold.
Through you, Mr. Chair. If you look at the, what is in the policy is basically what's in the collective agreements and what's in the Education Act. So, saying that you have no say, I guess, it's always been in both of those areas. So, what's here is basically what's in those two other documents.
Michael.
It's an operational item, I would think, not really within our parameter.
Well, management continues to have rights regardless of whether there's a policy or not. So, Director Talisman?
True. It is operational. Trustees wouldn't oversee the fact that teacher was in place fifteen minutes before school or five minutes after. That's principal or superintendent purview. And supervision minutes, we are beholden to how many minutes each teacher has according to their collective agreement. And we receive grievances. You don't receive grievances, I do, or HR does, if we break with those supervision minutes. So, overall, you don't have to, you can say it's important that we hire teachers, that we have teachers in place, but it's our job as the staff to make sure that these rules are followed.
Trustee Quinn.
So, do we get reports from the secretary or the Director of Education on the compliance with these policies, or updates on grievances, or failure to meet those standards that we've set out?
That would be me that receives those, but I don't necessarily report those to you.
Superintendent Overhold.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I guess, just to, I guess, clarification, grievance doesn't necessarily mean that we aren't complying with, it's this perspective as to who says we are or not. In regards to, there's not a lot of wiggle room. There is the Education Act in terms of when teachers have to be at school, when supervision needs to be required. The number of minutes has been mandated through collective bargaining. And at each school site, there's going to be different parameters as to what the supervision requirements are going to be, based on the number of students, based on the configuration of the school, based on the number of buses. So, those types of things, each school has an advisory committee made up of all the bargaining units, as long, as well as with their administrative staff, to create those supervision schedules, to make sure they're complying with the safety of that specific school, and meeting the requirements in the Act and through the collective agreement.
Any other comments, questions? So, the motion is to rescind this policy next Tuesday. Any other discussion? So, seeing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? Anyone opposed? See, no one opposed, so that carries. Can I have a mover for item three point eight, three dash zero four, Employee Assistance Program? Moved by trustee Quinn, seconded by trustee Trites. Superintendent O'Hara.
Thank you, and through you. As trustees are aware, the board did pass a motion that the Hilton Catholic Church School Board proceed with competitive bid process to gather proposals for an outsourced employee assistance program. And to that end, we do have a policy that's before you that needs some changing, and it is to reflect a move to have a sole provider for EAP programs. So, as you can see in the first purpose, we have gone and deleted some redundant language that talks about providing qualified counseling personnel, because we would be moving to likely a large single-source provider. We have also taken out and made some modifications to the committee. Staff is still suggesting that there be a committee made up of representatives of the various employee groups. Their roles would change, certainly continue to be advisory, in that we would meet on an annual basis to review information and any concerns that they may have with respect to the program. We have also struck out some information that wouldn't be applicable around an individual counselor and issues around attendance of the Catholic faith. We would cover that off through the competitive bid process in terms of our expectations. And lastly, on the second page of the report, those areas around the program parameter have seen some significant modifications to take out some of the rigid pieces of the current plan and to provide more flexibility to which we would see through, again, the competitive bid process and the discussions that we would have with the successful provider. That is all.
Okay, thank you. So, questions, discussion, please? Trustee Quinn.
I think, looking at the last bullet point under principles that we've scratched out, I'm wondering historically, how easy or difficult has it been to find service providers who would qualify for a letter from clergy? And did we have a good cohort of suppliers who we will now lose, who have gone through this process of vetting?
Did procurement want to take that question?
No, I just wanted to do the clarification after.
Okay, okay. Who would like to speak to that? Mr. O'Hara?
Certainly, and through you. I can start. I have never personally sat on the committee that has gone and reviewed new providers. That has been done through senior administrator of Human Resources, who's now retired. Usually, we would have the committee chair, and we would have had in the past a union representative on that committee. And so, we would go and invite various providers that would be interested. And then, there would be an interview that would take place, and conversations that would take place. I cannot guarantee that they've all provided a letter, but certainly, the conversations around expectations would have been covered on.
I've participated in some of those interviews, and what few I have done, and just in the last year or so, were re-interviewed and added two or three of those providers. They did, they agreed to adhere to the Catholic teaching, but they didn't submit letters of reference from pastors or anything like that. So, but they did, they did commit to taking the faith into account. And we did reject some on that basis as well, but they did not. Trustee Row.
So, the cost of this would just be a line item in the budget. But as I understand this, so the committee will decide on services that we want offered. So, will those be sort of, would those be communicated to the trustees, by the trustee representative, anytime they're changed and the associated costs with that?
Well, I'm not sure the committee is, the EAP committee itself is reviewing the bid. The purchasing is handling the bid right now, and it's submitted the questions. Can we have a comment on that? Or Superintendent?
Thank you. So, we have been working with business services to develop the competitive bid to send out to market, so that's still in draft form. We've mined a number of documents from other Catholic boards that have recently gone to market, so we're hoping to finalize that and push that out in the very near future. What part of that process will be to decide who the selection committee would be? And so, we would be recommending that that be made up of a combination of trustees and senior management staff.
Trustee Row.
Just to clarify that, then. So, obviously, the RFPs going out based on what we already have right now. So, but I'm just wondering, in the future, whether services would be removed or added to the package next time it goes out for RFP, whether that would be communicated to the trustees? Since it's, I'm assuming this is not tied to any collective agreements or contracts. It's a service that the board offers its employees.
Superintendent?
Again, through you. Certainly, staff would be happy to do a fulsome presentation on the new EAP program, certainly to trustees, to the board. And then, there would be a rollout that would happen for our employees. So, certainly, that's something that would be part of the plan.
And would you bring an opportunity for trustees to sit on the committee, on the selection, the bid selection committee?
Again, that, I had previously answered that, and so, it would be the intention that we would be asking for trustee representation to review the bids and to recommend who the successful person would be, or organization would be. Thank you.
Okay. So, really, this is being outsourced, and it's, we won't have it under our local purview as we have in the past. Any other comments, discussion? Purchasing.
Thank you to you, Mr. Chair. If I can just request a change in terminology, if that's okay, under the requirements, Section D, Program Parameters? On the first point, we referenced the request for proposal, and I prefer to have that changed to competitive bid process. I just wouldn't want to pigeonhole the board into a certain process if we may see a better fit in terms of competitive bid process that'll provide us a better opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move that we amend that to change request for proposal to competitive bid process throughout this document.
Okay, seconded for that amendment. Trustee Ian Tomasi. Any discussion on the amendment? Questions about that? Call a vote on the amendment? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so that change carries. Back to the main motion, which is the policy itself. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Okay, so seeing none, I'm going to call a vote that the Policy Committee recommends policy two, three dash zero four, Employee Assistance Program be forwarded along with amendments to June twentieth board meeting for approval. All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, that carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, can I have a mover for item three point nine, V dash fourteen, Alcohol? Board, School Sanctioned Events Off Premises. Can I have a mover for that? Nobody wants to move this. Trustee Trites, seconded by trustee Ian Tomasi. Superintendent Overhold, please. Okay, Superintendent Nagoy will handle this.
Alcohol and finance. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Staff conducted a review of the policy, V dash fourteen, Alcohol, Board and School Sanctioned Events Off Premises. We have consulted with our board insurance, the Ontario School Board Insurance Exchange, and they recommended just a few wording changes and some insurance coverage limit changes that have been reflected throughout the policy. And I'd be happy to take any questions trustees may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments, discussion, please? Trustee Quinn.
So, perhaps to the director, the, do these amounts of insurance prevent these potential events from taking place? Because, you know, if a group of teachers or educators are going somewhere and there may be alcohol involved, are they expected to find five million dollars worth of insurance for themselves? I've been to the, that, well, not bishops, you know, I was thinking about the discussion with the bishops, or it's called TAPS, and? Theology on Tap. So, that kind of event is not board sanctioned, but it's board staff attending, and it's the diocese that is putting on those events, I think. So, are we preventing ourselves from putting on great opportunities for engagement with staff by having this kind of insurance policy in the way?
Director Talisman?
I'll start it off, and maybe Roxanna, you can help me. The theology on tap is, the liability is at the location, so the bar is where theology takes place, is the liability location. So, really, that has, and people purchase their own. So, really, that has, and people purchase their own alcohol, and they take it under their own, it's like an, going somewhere to meet a bunch of friends. That would have nothing to do with board liability in this case. This is if we had a party here at a board site, and we'd have to have all the permits and everything in place in order to serve alcohol in this location, which isn't a registered place like a bar that would have a smart serve or a liquor license. That's what this policy pertains to. So, it is prohibit, like, yes, it helps deter having alcohol on board premises, yes.
Justy Rowe?
Yes, and it is prohibitive. As a member of Village Hall, we've joined lots of other halls in requiring anyone who rents the hall, you pay, you know, repay us, but you have to show us a certificate that you usually get online, that they've got insurance as the host. And so, it's as much as the hall rental, again. And that's pretty much become standard policy in this area for renting. So, if you want liquor at a baby shower, it's going to cost you a lot of money.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Okay, seeing, to last half, seeing none. A call for a vote to forward this policy to the June 20th meeting. All in favor? Anyone opposed? I see no one opposed. Is that correct? Okay, this carries unanimously. Thank you. Now, we're on to the discussion items. Can I have a mover for I dash 34.1? Or just discussion? Okay. Sure. Okay, so Director Dawson, please.
To you, Mr. Chair. This is a discussion, so presented for you tonight is Policy I-38, School Board Trustee Election Guidelines. This policy provides information to trustees and potential candidates on their conduct and responsibilities during elections and election campaigns. Also, we've included it because of the population trends that are happening in the Halton region for the criteria and determination of the distribution of trustees. Because the number of trustees per board is determined by the Ed Act, and currently, we still remain at nine trustees. In Regulation 412 slash 00, which you'll see in the appendix, we will not have enough electoral group to change that number of trustees. So, you have to reach a maximum in order to move to an additional trustee, as well as the regulation also looks at student population, and that's also attached. Also, in Regulation 412, it talks about how boards are to calculate their geographic representation of trustees by municipality, and it also provides steps for calculating that. So, by March 31st of any election year, the board must determine and pass a board resolution, and a resulting motion has to be communicated to the minister and school board election clerks in the municipalities, so that, so the board and the jurisdiction, they know how many trustees are being in their region for election. We've attached an appendix B, and it talks about projected rate pair of population, and also to consider fair and equitable distribution of trustee representation for each region and the rate pairs. We've proposed the following changes to Policy I-38, being presented here for discussion. And so, the, Regulation 412 is quite lengthy. It's Appendix A. What I'd like to draw your attention to is Appendix B, and this is a little calculation called the Population Electoral Group by Rate Pair. We've got it broken down by the municipalities and the projection out based on what we know as our best guesses at this time. There's some calculations. You'll see that we never really go over nine trustees. However, the population calculations for each region does change somewhat over the next few years. Happy to take any questions trustees may have or comments on the policy at this time for discussion.
Thank you, Director. Justy Quinn?
So, looking at the 2024 Estimated Population Electoral Group counts, do we see any potential changes to representation around the board here, even though we remain at nine? Do we see the allocations changing at all?
Through you, Mr. Chair. If you look at actually the 2018 Estimated Population Electoral Groups, when we did the calculation, we, if you look at A times B divided by C, you can see how many trustees in a, up to the thousandth decimal place. Halton Hills would have 1.0. Milton would have 1.7. Burlington 2.7, and Oakville 3.47. And we've made a suggested distribution for your referral there.
Justy Michael?
Do you remember at the end of the last term, we were talking about poor Milton with one trustee and no hope of getting another one? As for the formula, we were going to borrow one from another, like Burlington or Oakville, and move it, but what happened to that?
It was defeated.
Okay. I couldn't remember if we were going to discuss it further, or...
Do you have the floor, Justy Michael?
I just wanted to know what happened, and I just don't know with the growth in Milton, are we ever, do you think we're going to get to that number?
Are you asking me, or are you asking? Okay, Superintendent Overholt.
Through you, Mr. Chair. If you look at the report, Director Dawson stated we would have to get up to 150,000 electoral or 45,000 students. And if you look at our projections, we do not foresee us getting to those numbers. So, the nine would be what we would have over the next number of years. And I guess to answer your other question, I believe what ended up happening was the board of trustees, I think, were trying to lobby for a, an additional trustee, but came back saying that that was not going to happen. So, that's why we are at nine, and kind of coming forward was to do a fair and equitable distribution. We looked at what the formula states, and it is in the policy, to determine proper distribution of trustees, and this is a way to make sure, as Milton is growing, that proper representation of trustees are looked at.
Director Dawson?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just a little history. I believe in early spring of 2013, there was a board report, and at the time, that that motion was defeated. After that, after, in the fall, there was an ad hoc committee struck where we were lobbying for, and trustee Marai was chairing that ad hoc committee, lobbying the ministry for an additional trustee, in particular, for Milton. However, you know, sent the letter, they come back and said, follow Regulation 412, look at the PEG, look at your students. If you don't fall within the parameters to get another trustee, you won't. And we've got some, the PEG, the most it goes up to, to 2028 is 117,000, and student population will not reach 45,000 at that time.
Justy Quinn?
When you calculate the Milton and, I guess, the growth areas, are you taking into account the number of Catholic registered voters? Or are you taking into account the number of students attending the schools?
Director Dawson?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Fred is the one that did all these calculations and gets them all from the municipalities, so I'll pass it on to him.
Through you, Madam Chair. When I did the calculation, I focused primary, oh, sorry. Through you, Mr. Chair. In doing the calculation, what I've used is the closest thing to the number that they're looking to use, which is the Population Electoral Group, the PEG report, which was only submitted at that time for the prior, on the February prior to the election. Now, what that is determined by is the number of rate pairs within a municipality, which we can extract on a quarterly basis from MPAC. So, I use that as the basis to begin the calculation, and also looking back as to what the trends were in terms of Catholic rate pair growth, decline. I've applied that on a go-forward basis to determine whether or not there'd be growth or decline. Now, this assumes that we're going to be following the same trends as we have over the past few years, and what we've seen is that Milton has increased over the past few years, again, most likely because of its higher rate of growth in terms of Catholic rate pairs, whereas Oakville, over time, has been dwindling as student population has been declining, families are aging, and we're not seeing as many Catholic rate pairs move into our newer neighborhoods. So, we're using the actual trends of rate pair growth or decline to determine what happens in the future. The student enrollment is a different thing that we looked at, and that's just your typical yield that also take into account what the apportionment for students are. But primarily, within the Ed Act, when we're determining the number and the distribution, it's really based on the PEG report, and that's what we've used as the basis.
Justy Michael?
Through you, Mr. Chair. To Fred, following those trends, and I'm sure that they've risen accord, like tremendously since 2013, and I know it would cause a big kerfuffle and stuff, but doesn't it make sense to take one from Burlington and/or Oakville and give it to Milton if we've got a hope of ever...
Justy Rowe, and then Ian Tomasi.
It just goes to illustrate how important it is that we continue to urge the parent councils of the schools to, to continue urging the parents to make sure that they are Catholic school trustee supporters. One of the things being, as soon as you move, you automatically become a public school supporter by law, and they need to know that, especially people who are new to a community, or people who live in the same community and move houses. They wouldn't even, nobody would peg, because even the secretary wouldn't pull out a form because they already go to that school, but they've moved to a new house, therefore, they become public school rate pairs.
Justy Quinn?
Do we follow that procedure when we open a new school? For example, do we try and sign up everyone to be a Catholic rate pair? Because the new address would revert them back to the public...
Through you, Mr. Chair, and maybe Ken, we always put the, you know, the direction of public taxpayer support in, with the registration form. So, we've been really trying to do a better job of that over the last number of years, so we do have an accurate account from MPAC numbers as to who are our Catholic rate pairs.
Justy Ian Tomasi?
Thank you. I do have a comment, but just to follow up on the Director's comment, I believe Oxta has been working with MPAC, and the information has been coming back to the boards on that, and I think we had it on our website as well. I don't know if we, yeah, I don't know if we still do that. But I just want to be clear here, because I'm looking at proposed distribution, and I'm seeing, it looks like you're recommending, or suggesting, or whatever you want to say, calculating that Oakville give up one trustee, and so we can get another one in Milton. Is that, am I reading that right?
Superintendent Overholt?
Through you, Mr. Chair, and then Fred can jump in. Again, these are numbers that we are kind of projecting at this point in time, and like Fred said, come February time, when you get the actual numbers, that's when you would for sure get the exact calculation to determine. I guess we're projecting to say if the numbers stay as we foresee, that they would work out to that. It would be three, Oakville three, Burlington two, Milton, and one for Halton Hills. Then again, over time, that changes as well through the years.
Justy Ian Tomasi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If someone could remind me at what point we look at, whether it was Burlington votes by ward, Oakville's at large, obviously, Milton's at large because there's only one, and Halton Hills. So, at what point do we look at how each municipality wants to handle their voting?
Mr. Tebow?
Through you, Madam Chair, Mr. Chair. Let me finish the word. It would be around the same period of time that we would be advising to the ministry and the lead municipality, which is Oakville, of our intention to, of our distribution, and as well as whether or not you want the ward based or at large. So, it'd be at that point in time we would determine that. So, the deadline would be March 31st to determine that as well of the election year.
Yeah, that resolution is annually, every election cycle in March, so we've done it every single time. But the regulation doesn't prescribe how to round, does it? How to round the math?
Right.
Mr. Tebow?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Third time's the charm. One thing I can maybe point to in terms of what we currently have, we pulled what's in MPAC to date in terms of representation. So, if you look on the chart on the 2016 Estimated Population Electoral Group counts, as of now, what I've done is I've provided what the distribution is based on the regulation's calculation, what we currently have in terms of distribution, and the variance as to what it amounts to. And right now, what we're seeing is Halton Hills is relatively at par. Milton is missing about 0.65 of a trustee. Burlington has an overage of 0.26, and Oakville 0.47, and that's based on current numbers. We can continually report over time, but that's what we've seen today. So, if you carry that forward in a few years and follow the same trends, that's what we estimate for 2018 as well, is kind of that same trend moving forward. I hope that clarifies.
So, you're saying, Mr. Tebow, that this is a forecasted PEG based on trends? We don't have a, we're not using the PEG from this year, right?
Correct. The PEG only comes out the February of the election year. This is just using the same data. It's just a different format of a report, and it's pulling the same information, and based on the numbers we pulled in 2016 in December around, that's the total amount we have board-wide is 115,000. So, just this table over here on Appendix B would be the current state of affairs as of the last poll in January.
So, maybe a follow-up question, and maybe you answered this earlier, but how do we know that there's a trend downward, trend of 1,338? So, that was from 2016. How do we know? So, we were looking at year-over-year from 2016 to 17? Is that it? How can we know if the PEG was only issued in 2016?
Through you, Mr. Chair. That's a good question. What we've done is we looked at previous PEG reports, which is 2014. So, we looked at what happened between 2014 to now, which we've seen an overall decline in that four-year period of about 1,300 rate pairs. And then, what we've done is over the next two years, we've apportioned that total over four. We've broken it down over two years and applied that on a go-forward. Again, this is provided to give you an idea of what we suspect will happen by 2018. Typically, these things stay relatively consistent. So, again, we'll have more definitive answers at the February point in time when we receive the PEG report. That's not to say we can't continually review these numbers as we pull out quarterly reports if requested by the board.
Thank you. So, if the PEG is issued in February, we only have from the beginning of February, when that report comes out, to the end of March, to make that decision? Anyone else? Mr. Tebow?
Albeit not the official reports, we could provide you with a report around the December timeline, which would give you a pretty good estimation, because then you're only about three months. So, there's probably not going to be a huge variance between the December to February... February report, so you can at least begin thinking about how to proceed on this matter.
So we can pull things from MPAC ourselves? Is that, is that, is that it? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item 4.2, Strategic Planning Policy. Superintendent Nagoy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In accordance with the board's resolution to develop a strategic planning policy and have it approved by November 30th, we have drafted a policy for discussion tonight and have used the Education Act and Bill 177, as well as the Ministry of Education guidelines for the strategic planning process in developing the guide. The policy is divided into four stages with various approval points for the board within each of the stages, and it suggests a four-year strategic plan for the board in order to align it with the term in office for trustees. And the thought behind it is that the strategic planning policy could be triggered about a year and a half into the term of a new board, which would allow trustees, new trustees, to get acquainted with the organization, the policies and bylaws, as well as with the plan that has been in place and how it is, the, the board is operating against it before developing a new policy, a new strategy for the board. At that point, a, in the January of the second year, in, of the mandate of the new board, a strategic planning process would be triggered, and it would allow then for the board to develop a, a strategic plan that they would be able to monitor as well before the end of the term and see how it performs. So the, the policy also is going to have a visual flowchart of the process with the points of approval and resolutions from the board, and that is still under development. I'll be provided at the next meeting. And the director, Superintendent Overhold, and myself will be happy to address any questions trustees may have.
Great, thank you very much. Director Dawson or Superintendent Overhold, would you like to add anything to, to that? Okay, so questions, discussion? Trustee Quinn.
For the chair of the Policy Committee, is this what you envisioned when you brought the resolution, the motion to our board, that this sort of very basic framework would be the policy, and then a procedure and flowchart would follow?
I'm impressed with the first try at drafting the plan. I really want trustees to participate. I don't want it just to be what, what I think a strategic planning policy ought to be. We have a treasurer who's experienced in corporate governance, and she's, she knows how corporations work and how they plan, so that expertise is here. We have documents that are cited here. I do think that the duration of the plan ought to be a trustee decision based on the circumstances of, of the time, or what the priorities turn out to be that they agree on. But I think all the key elements that I'm looking for here are here. I think that if anything, the development of objectives is something where there would need to be more deliberation, discussion, and interaction between the staff, so the superintendents, and the trustees to, to determine priorities and objectives, and come up with some ones, some things that we agree on. But we can't put that into the process unless trustees vote on the milestones of this policy development. So it's not, I mean, I can't just say, here's what we ought to do, and we do it. I'm looking for trustee participation in the next draft, and to make some motions on what should be included. I want us to agree on the process. I would like to, I, I've stated this in every strategic planning cycle that we've ever had, is that one of the flaws that I, that I've seen myself is that there's too much segregation between the trustees and the superintendents, that there's not enough interaction. So I guess it's, you can be subjective and think what, what is enough or what is not enough, but I think that trustees ought to determine what the, vote on what priorities are, what the objectives and targets we want to achieve in, in the duration of the plan, in the cycle of the plan, based on what superintendents bring forward, and we kind of decide what the priorities are. So that's, that's the kind of thing I want to see built into this policy if we can, if we can agree. And, you know, I'm open, I don't want this just to be me discussing it, so I want, I want all of you to participate in it. Trustee Quinn.
Would you, would part of this policy include hiring outside, outside council as we had in the past, or would we rely on the director and staff to, to guide the policy or the procedure?
Through you, Madam Chair, or Mr. Chair, sorry. I saw a, a flowchart, Roxanna, earlier, and it's referenced here in Appendix A, but I don't see Appendix A. And what you're asking for, trustee Quinn, falls under Phase One, Getting Started, where the trustees approve or not approve the, the use of a facilitator and outside assistance. So there was a flowchart, I don't know, Roxanna, but, and then it would say trustee vote on certain areas, and it all aligns with the four phases.
Superintendent Overhold.
Through you, Mr. Chair. In Phase One, it's the last statement that trustees approve through board resolution, the recommendation to use a subject matter expert. So there's a number of spots throughout the phases that do ask for board resolutions, so specific stages that they're asking for board of trustees to approve at each, each point.
Trustee, or Superintendent Nagoy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, and yes, there will be a visual which will outline all these steps, and will make it easier to follow than just seeing the wording in a policy. The policy, the way it's been written, it allows for trustees to make decision at each cycle that may differ from one cycle to the other, to, to be able to be flexible enough. So it will still be the board's decision, but at one cycle, the decision may be, yes, use a subject matter expert, or let's collect data in this format, or the communication plan should look this way. And then at the next strategic planning session, the board may decide something else. So we need to just be a bit cautious on how much stringent the policy may be from one cycle to the next, just so that the board would have the ability, the board that is current at the time will have the ability and the flexibility to choose how to manage the process.
Perfect, thank you. And do we have, do we have a section there that describes public input or incorporates the town halls that we have on the books right now?
Yes, the, the policy refers to two types of communication plans. So one would be the consultation process and how that would occur, and the other one would be how we would be communicating with the various stakeholder groups throughout the development of the strategic plan. So there's two separate points within the policy to address that communication.
Anyone else? Thoughts, concerns, criticisms? None of the above? Trustee Quinn.
What's the next step in this?
That's a good question. So this is the last policy meeting until September. Is it feasible, is it workable to have another draft brought in September, and then that would be the first reading, and then I'm assuming that would go out for stakeholder consultation? Is that reasonable?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Certainly is. I guess all I've heard so far is recommendations from, from the chair in terms of changes, so I don't hear much else in terms of what it is. So I guess what we would ask of you is to, to go through the draft right now. If you do have any feedback, to provide it to us so that during the summertime and for the September meeting, that we would have something that may be obviously different than what's here in terms of your recommendations and suggestions, that we can bring it forward to September's policy.
Thank you for that, Superintendent Overhold. I was hoping that we could, we could make some submissions by email over the summer. So if you want to look at this policy and the other supporting documentation, so we had a couple of resources. One, that's a draft from January of 2017. You have that from OCSTI, I believe. And then there was an earlier one from 2012. Okay. Okay. So, so you have those resources as well? And then any other, of course, any other research you may do on your own? And you've been, you've all been through one cycle, everyone's been through one cycle at least. So you've seen how this has been done, but I think that, you know, all of you can see that a key piece is determining what the priorities and objectives are. What are the main challenges facing the board, and what should we focus on for the next four years, or whatever the duration of the cycle is.
So could I ask then that staff send us maybe an editable version of this for us to, to work on to Redline, and then when the treasurer has the draft of the flowchart to share that with us as well, so we can comment on that, please?
How does that sound to Superintendent Nagoy and Overhold? Are you open to draw a word, document, and sending out the flowchart any time it's ready?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Certainly, it's a matter of the, the Redline coming back to us, we'll just have to kind of incorporate those. The sooner we get that back from you, the better. We could do that over the summertime, sure.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you very much, Superintendent Nagoy and trustee, or Superintendent Overhold, for that first draft. Thank you. And now, moving on to the information items. So Superintendent Nagoy, you have the first three of these, 5.1, 5.2, and 5.3 Administrative Procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've already mentioned these during the action items. So Procedure VI-91 Banking Investment and Borrowing is a brand-new procedure. It incorporates more of the operating details in managing the banking investments and borrowing of the board, and it follows Policy I-10 in Item 3.1 on the agenda. Should I keep going, or any questions?
Any questions at this point? I see none, so maybe contin, yeah, we, we mainly did. So if you may continue, and then if we get to, well, Mr. Brown's not here. Okay. Superintendent Nagoy, did you have anything else on 5.2 or 5.3?
5.2 was not mentioned before. It's the meal expenses for employees at board sanctioned events such as catering, for example, for, at the full-day training sessions, as an example. It's been reviewed, and the, the rates have been updated in accordance with the Ontario guidelines. I believe that there were small changes, just in terms of the, the rates to be in line with the 2017 rates. There were no other changes made.
And there was the CRA mileage expense rates and that, right?
The CRA mileage rate was within the, the next point, 5.3, the reimbursement for board business expenses and employees. So it was captured both in the new procedure in Item 5.3, as well as in 3.2 and 3.3 in the action items.
Okay, thanks. Any, I don't see any questions or concerns. Okay, so we'll move on to 5.4. Superintendent Overhold.
Through you, Mr. Chair. At the last policy meeting, there were changes to the Child Abuse and Protection of Students policy, which required some minor changes to the procedure, basically in terms of ensuring the reporting process to CAS was properly recorded in here, and particularly not, we don't, no longer do consults, that if you are making a report, is direct report to them. One thing that just came out today, which means we are going to have to change our policy and procedure early in September, is that the definition of child has been raised from 16 to 18 years old, which means obviously our policy refers to students as of youth under the age of 16 or under, so those changes are going to have to be made going forward into September.
What part of the law changed you?
Child Youth and Family Services Act passed and updated. It, and then there are a few key items. We just recently received that from Superintendent Brown.
One other thing through you, Mr. Chair, the name Crown Ward is now Society Ward. So that was part of the, the age change and the nomenclature of, of this.
Okay, any questions about that? Any comments? Seeing none, so moving on to 5.5 Roof Access Procedure.
Through you, Mr. Chair. This came through our Health and Safety Officers and Facility Department, that the need for procedure in regards to roof access. We do have a, a number of our workers that we acquired, outside contract workers, as well as our own custodial staff that do go on to the roof and making sure that, that safety feature is, is in there. So we, they have identified a procedure, making sure people are aware of them going on to the roof, having proper communications at all times, so that is put in place for, for staff and for contract workers.
Okay, thank goodness we have this now. So any questions or concerns? I'm not being flip out, I guess I, we need this policy, or this procedure. Okay, seeing none. Any miscellaneous information? No correspondence? And any new business? Can we have a motion to excuse trustees Carabella MRI, moved by trustee Yana Tomasi, seconded by trustee Quinn? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Seeing none? Not unanimous? And can I have a motion to adjourn and a closing prayer? Trustee Rowe, seconded by trustee Michael? Trustee Rowe, please. Closing prayer?
Okay, join me in the Our Father, please, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallelujah.
Trust, Superintendent Overhold.
Sorry, my apologies. I should have mentioned that the two documents that were walked in is the Policy Committee Working Plan, the 2016-17, the, the policies that we have gone through this year up to this, this one meeting that we won't be able to finalize in terms of what has occurred to it, and as well, the policy review cycle for, for next school year.
Trevor, thank you. Did I call, did I vote on the motion to adjourn? Okay, good. Okay, thanks, everyone.